Happy Tuesday, December 6th.
Superl is what it's stated.
To everyone, this is the City of Iowa City Work Session, and it is just 4:00 PM. I want to make sure that Counselor Pauline Taylor is connected.
Not yet, we're working on it.
Okay, all right. She's going to be joining us by Zoom today. And I'm going to add that this is the first meeting since I've been on council in 2018 that she's ever missed.
I think she told me, I think it's the first meeting that she's missed ever. Well, I mean, obviously, we're all on Zoom.
She's still here, though. Yeah, yeah. Still present, still present. So, all right, we're going to get right into the agenda. And we'll start with an overview of available crisis suicide services. And I'm going to introduce from Community Crisis Services Sarah Nelson, the Executive Director, so please welcome.
Thank you. What do I do here to get to my slide there?
Oh, great.
Okay, so I just wanted to address council. This time of year is a bit challenging, and we're going into the winter months with seasonal depression and things that are really challenging. Plus, we're experiencing a lot of struggle with the youth in our community, so I want to make sure everyone's aware of what's available and the different kind of points of intervention of crisis services that are available in Iowa City. As you know, we've had a rough couple of weeks, and so we're keeping a really close eye on the trends and what the gaps are and how we can continue to meet those. We've seen an increase in mobile crisis calls. We're seeing an increase in the response for mobile crisis to schools, as well as an increase in chat and text. So everything is being heavily utilized right now. So the first resource I want to make sure everybody's aware of is 988 Suicide Crisis and Lifeline. The most important thing, because it's newer to some folks, is that you can text or call 988 24/7. And that texting is a really good resource for youth or folks that are not sure about talking to someone on the phone and feel like there's a little bit more anonymity. And there's also the 988lifeline.org/chat, which can be accessed through the computer. Those 99% of contacts to 988 right now are being answered by one of two Iowa centers, with Community being one of those. And then Community backs Iowa up because we have a national contract. So if you chat or text 988, you're 99.9% of the time going to get a Community Crisis Counselor due to that. I also wanted to point out the University of Iowa Support and Crisis Line that's also answered by Community Counselors. This is available for University of Iowa students, faculty, parents frequently will contact it when they're concerned about their students. And that can also be, you can text or call 844-461-5420. And I kind of think about this as a continuum in terms of, you know, level of intervention. We're starting with crisis phone chat and text, and then mobile crisis being kind of that next level intervention if somebody needs a little bit more support. Mobile crisis, you call 1-855-581-8111 and ask for a mobile crisis dispatch. They will dispatch anywhere in the community 24/7. The important thing that I think for people to know about mobile crisis response and what I constantly like to message is that it is available to everyone in the community, regardless of your socioeconomic status, your insurance status. I think this is particularly important because, you know, there, it doesn't matter if you have a gold standard insurance, there's no service that's going to come in 60 minutes or less if you're experiencing a crisis or your child's experiencing a crisis to your home. So I think that's a common misconception that this isn't something available to everyone. And it is, and we want people to use it when they need help. The other important thing about mobile crisis is there's no time limitation on the intervention. So counselors come out. If that ends up needing to take two hours to resolve that crisis and de-escalate it and make sure people are feeling the support they need, counselors will be there for two hours. If it takes longer, it takes longer. And we have a really great follow-up process in terms of, we'll call back 24 hours after the call and stay in touch with that individual or family to make sure they're getting connected. I always like to point that out because I think that's a really important piece of mobile crisis, is that it's kind of that portal to make sure that they're getting that follow-up and that continued connection. And then Guide Link Access Center, I would say, is, you know, when the crisis can't be addressed by 988 phone chat or text or mobile crisis, then Guide Link would be kind of the next step in that intervention, offering triage crisis counseling, crisis observation, crisis stabilization beds, medical detox and sobering. And mobile crisis or Guide Link can assess for crisis stabilization beds at Guide Link, which are three to five day stay. And then lastly, I wanted to talk about the Coping with Suicide Loss Support Group, which is run in partnership with Community by a couple survivors of loss, and they meet the first Thursday of each month at Guide Link Center from 7:00 to 8:30. So I want to make sure that people that are coping with that realize that that support group is available in our community. So does council have any questions about any of those services?
I'm just curious. I think it's what you were describing in terms of having someone, a counselor, be able to come out to help during a crisis is amazing, and that follow-up piece as well. You said it's 24 hours, or is there, are there situations where, I guess my question is, does a counselor feel like a situation, once they come to resolution, that then 24 hours is...
That follow-up?
Makes sense, yeah. As opposed to like saying, you know what, I think you're good, I think you're in a better place, but I'm going to call you in four hours. Is that an option?
That does happen. Yes. And that'll even happen off of 988 phone chat and text, too. If we, you know, wrap up with the safety plan and support, we might ask, based on our assessment, would you like a call back in four hours? So that's always an option with any of those services, and counselors are pretty good at gauging, like, you know, should we see if they need that check-in? And the other thing that's important about mobile crisis is, you know, crisis does not happen in a vacuum and for a short period of time, right? And so there might be families or individuals that are experiencing a fairly acute level of crisis that lasts a few months. And so, you know, those are, we will go out repeatedly, as is needed, and that's not unusual for us to do so. So sometimes it's a one-and-done, and we just do follow-up. Sometimes mobile crisis will go out multiple times on the same individual or family in a short period of time to help support them.
Do we, do we have, or do you have a sense of the, oh, I'm here.
Where is the voice in the sky coming from with the masks? I was struggling.
Do you have a sense of the geographic distribution of these calls, where they're coming from?
Yes, so I don't have the data in front of me, and I plan to bring you some, a deeper dive into data in January to kind of show you what we're seeing. I can tell you for mobile crisis, over 60% originate in Iowa City specifically, so it's very heavy utilization. The call, chat and text breakdown is because we answer for the whole state. I don't even want to try to ballpark that without having the data in front of me.
Do we know within Iowa City where the calls are emanating from?
We only know by county. So for 988 Lifeline, we just get a breakdown. So like, I know we answered 62% of the calls that originated in Johnson County in the month of October. And we are, Lifeline kind of holds that data, and we get what they give us. We're not able to run reports outside of what they provide to us, except for our internal cues. So there's some limitations, but they're trying to improve upon that so that we can pinpoint that a little bit more.
Thank you.
Sarah, I know that mobile crisis has ramped up quite a bit in a short period of time, and you mentioned a 60-minute response, you know, and, which is, I think, great for the level of service that is being provided. And I also know in the recent funding that we approved, you were looking at a much shorter response. Can you just kind of speak to where you are in improving those services as far as that response time?
So within the City of Iowa City, the average response time is 24 minutes. So it's, our goal is 15, just for total transparency. That's what we'd like to see within the City of Iowa City. And I think we'll get there in the next six months. The volume of school calls is significantly greater than what it was last year, which is wonderful. It's what we want. We want them to be calling mobile crisis, and it's, that's, the volume during the day has been pretty intense. So we're adding another youth-focused mobile crisis counselor to support our coordinator because of that volume, and that's going to help out, too. So we're hoping to see that drop from the 24 to the 15 minutes, or at least close in that area.
Wonderful, thank you.
Sarah, do you want to speak at all to the future, sort of what you're looking toward, or do you want to hold that until January?
I mean, I can give broadly what we're hoping, especially in light of 988. So one of the things that was the most exciting about 988 coming to fruition is that it's a truly transformative opportunity for crisis services. It's never happened before, and it provides an access point that just hasn't existed for people to easily remember, to access via phone, chat or text. And so we're going to see, the state has funding to start a statewide campaign for 988 because there's been no marketing outside of media up until this point. So there'll be a formal statewide campaign. Then Vibrant will be doing their formal national campaign in the beginning of 2023. And at the same time, we're looking at piloting 911 to 988 diversion projects. So the state is going to pick three different counties where we are going to pilot, and the Lifeline Centers will work with the Pice Apps to train them in what's an appropriate call to divert directly to 988, which then will probably divert to mobile crisis more frequently than not. So right now, 98% of call, chat and text can de-escalate the crisis without in-person contact, but we know when we look at 911 to 988 diversion, we're going to see a significant number of mobile crisis calls. Because when someone calls 911, they're expecting and need a response. And so while that response might not be law enforcement, because it's going to be off of 988, they're going to need to see mobile crisis response more frequently because of the acuity of the caller. So there's a lot of system stuff, you know, being done to make sure that there's preparation for that. We also take it really seriously that we don't want to miss any calls. So if we're diverting from 911 to 988, we absolutely have to have the capacity to answer those calls 100% of the time and very quickly. So that's, that's a big change as well. And then the hope is that 988 will eventually be able to do centralized dispatch of all mobile crisis teams throughout the state and connect to the local mental health access centers and crisis stabilization beds and all of the crisis resources so that it's really client-centered and not as fragmented as it currently is. And we're lucky because one of the 988 centers is in Iowa City, and so naturally, those counselors have a really good familiarity with our crisis services.
Thank you.
You had mentioned the big uptick in need this fall. Is that mostly because, what's your sense, is that because it's easier to access now through things like 988? Or is there actually more to be, more just need in general? Do you have a sense of that at all?
Yeah, I think that we're definitely seeing fallout from the pandemic, from economic uncertainty, inflation. All of these stressors are things that are increasing the risk for suicide and jeopardizing people's mental health, and so we're seeing that. We're seeing it in the community. We're seeing youth struggling more after they haven't been in school for a couple years. It's just, it's apparent that everybody is still struggling in the numbers that we're seeing locally, nationally.
Thank you.
Well, really appreciate you coming and sharing kind of a quick synopsis of what's happening and to really share some resources with those during the holiday season. I think it's a critical time for a lot of individuals, and this will be helpful. One question I would have for you, maybe when you come back to us, because these are some relatively new services, how is the word being spread? You know, is the school district a part of that? Of course, the University of Iowa, they just kind of launched their new service, I think, within the past year. And how is, you know, how do they anticipate that word is spreading throughout the, throughout the student body as well as their faculty? And then elderly, we know that there are advocates like Bob Welsh out there that work with elderly people. And we have the Senior Center. Just wanted to know if there are avenues where the word can be spread a little more on these services?
I think, you know, messaging is going to be really important in the next few months and continuing to step up our messaging game and ways that we can partner to get the word out. You know, the recent, putting 988 on the law enforcement cars and some of the conversation around maybe putting that on city buses and really thinking about how can we get that messaging out and, and do it in a way that lets people know it's, it's for everyone? I think you're absolutely right around special populations in terms of, you know, texting 988 isn't going to be great for, for a certain population. So how do we make sure that they're getting the message if they need that support? And so doing some outreach and work with aging services would be a really good idea and something we haven't, you know, intentionally done yet. I can tell you the school district, because it's very cool, this year on the back of all of their student IDs, put a heart QR code. And when you scan that, it takes you to an Iowa City School District support page, and it has the 988 information and mobile crisis and UAY and lots of other resources. And so they had that ready to go at the beginning of the school year, which was really, really cool, so.
Awesome. Thank you again for coming.
Thank you.
Yes, all right. We're going to ask Kelly, our city clerk, to connect Counselor Pauline Taylor. So we'll give her a little time to do that. While she's preparing, we'll ask USG to get ready, just to come forth. Counselor Taylor, can you hear us?
Counselor Taylor, can you hear?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can. There will be a little delay, so just know that if you're wanting to jump in and speak, I may not catch it in time, in real time.
Okay. Thanks, I'll try.
Great. All right. Well, at this time, we're going to welcome updates from USG on their 2022 through 2023 Renters' Guide.
We are having a little bit of trouble making sure that everything is viewable on the screen. It looks cut off.
Okay, so I am not IT. And you are not in good hands right now. And Counselor Taylor, I'll ask that if there's a way that you can mute when you're not speaking?
I'll try, Mayor. I'm not on Zoom. I'm just on the phone.
Oh, sure. Okay, thank you.
But I'll turn my TV down.
All right.
Well, and council should have also received copies of the presentation. If y'all have that, if there's anything cut off, that, okay.
Does that work?
Yeah, definitely. Perfect.
Thank you.
Great. All right.
All right, hi, Council. So Ellie, Noah and I today will be presenting the Renters' Guide 2022 to 2023. So it's an important tool for informing student renters to make educated housing and renting decisions. And then we shared the Renters' Guide through a variety of mediums, including our social media, email notifications, university newsletter, and the Renters' Fair and other events such as those.
To begin our discussion, I think it's important that we kind of talk about the methods that we use to gather this data, as well as some of the general results demographics-wise of who we were able to actually reach out to. So we predominantly sent this out through social media, via our own posts and stories, but also utilizing student government and then encouraging relevant student orgs to also share this. We also sent it out into mass emails on two different occasions. That allowed us to garner the most amount of results thus far with nearly 650 respondents. And we were only able to use about 500. That was due to levels of completion as well as other factors, because some people might have logged into it and then like wrote their name and then didn't do anything else. So we couldn't use that sadly. But the results that we were able to use allowed us, ended up becoming 70% undergraduate, 30% graduate, and then predominantly people using Chi-Her pronouns had completed the profiles. So I think that that's interesting because it means that women, women in Iowa City were able, were most likely to be advocates and self-advocates for their housing, which I think is pretty cool. Additionally, about 40% of the respondents also identified as non-traditional students in various forms of way, as you can see listed. And then finally, to be included in the guide landlords needed to have, in guide representations, landlords needed to have 10 or more respondents. We did, however, in the full guide, note all the different other landlords that were options. I think it was about like 15 others that couldn't be included.
So next up, we have, so this is the average rent across Iowa City itself. The average rent comes around $652.08, and the maximum average rent was $200 more than their average student income. And so this is taking into effect that you get $11 per hour with a max of 20 hours for the university. The highest rental companies, as you can see, is Rise at Riverfront Crossing, Aspire at West Campus, and Rentals IC. Possible causes to the housing issues include inflation and rising rental prices across the town. 30% of respondents said that they are paying over 50% of their income on rent, which is a huge burden on students already having to pay for schooling as well as daily expenses.
Repairs and cooperation. Many respondents experienced cheap fixes to problems in their rental property, which would then result in partial to no return of their security deposit. Common predatory actions occurred such as unspecified utility fees, having to pay unnecessary fixes to apartments and being charged with high cleaning prices. Iowa Housing Code 562A.15 maintains the right of a safe and sanitary living environment, whereas a tenant can experience their unit to have an, sorry, can expect their unit to have unnecessary repairs and keep the common area of the property clean.
So as we can see with results from repairs and consideration, it's important that in order to maintain the culture and the health of the college town, it's important to, this is highly dependent on the physical environment, of course. So we also wanted to assess how capable tenants were to be contacting their landlords and, from their experience, were they receiving contact back? So most people were not aware of how to contact their landlord, but most people that were able to or knew how to contact their landlord found that the moats that they were given were accessible. So I would imagine portals and things like that, maybe text. That's what I used to do with my landlord. Those were usually responsive, but, and at the same time, they also felt that their landlords were being professional. However, our data does show that the newer units experienced the least cooperative landlords. And in contrast, apartments in Iowa City had the highest landlord cooperation. We will be changing some of these questions next year to be more kind of like straightforward, too, because there could be skews in the data based on the like questioning and stuff like that, but yeah.
So for sustainability, the average person had access to some form of recycling at their rental property, but it was not large enough or nor did they know about the size. So people often just aren't paying attention to the size of like their rental, I mean, not their, their rental recycling dumpster or anything like that. And data on this one is also very inconclusive, as the system is ranked from zero, one and two, being that zero is I don't, or one, two and three, sorry, that three is I don't know and one is yes. So if you don't know and yes, it gets a very inconclusive answer. So we will be also changing this for the next rental guide.
So some main takeaways. Respondents were able to provide quotes on the management and condition of their experience renting. A vast majority of comments focused on the ideas surrounding unaffordable housing, inadequate living conditions, and lack of proper management. One such quote is, "We moved in with no sync, no Wi-Fi for two months, and the microwave didn't work, and it could have caused a fire, and it took three months to fix." Another such quote is, "Landlords admitted this was his worst apartment and would be making needed repairs before moving. Carpets had burn marks and it was gross. Cabinets smell of mold, and there are holes in the walls and a few cabinets. We were not informed that the building was infested with bugs prior to move in." All right. And then continuing forward, "We'd like to partner with the city to establish friendly renting initiatives, starting with addressing the lease gap housing crisis, which affects a wide variety of Iowa City residents, students, or otherwise. We recommend the city take a concerted effort in providing and sharing information on lease gap housing and reading leases to determine lease gaps. We are working on passing the renters' checklist in the state legislature, and we would like to see similar policy passed in the Iowa City area. We would also like to advocate for half-year leases for students. And going forward in next year's Renters' Guide, we are planning to add a couple of questions regarding radon testing and pest control in one or more unit buildings. Thank you for your time."
If council has any questions, we would also be willing to, it takes a little bit of time to answer that.
I'm not familiar with the six-month lease piece. What's the argument for that?
Yeah, so from my conversations with landlords and some lawyers that have been like following this issue for a while, they found that six-month leases could allow for some reduction of the pressure in August for landlords to have all the cleaning done within like a two-week period. This would help reduce like possible lease gaps as well as for short-term residents, especially with the transient student population. It could be very helpful for people maybe who are graduating a semester early or otherwise are coming back later. Other college towns, like in, like Charlotte, North Carolina, they have these kind of options, and it's been found to be pretty effective and helpful for dealing with that.
Thank you.
Any others?
I think the University of Iowa had some dorms available to students this past fall when the transition happened. Was USG able to kind of get that word out to individuals? And do you know if all of those units were occupied?
Yes, and more so. So we utilized, we were the main organizers for that, and we were mostly working through the IMU House Hotel. It was originally planned to be in dorms, but then it was moved to the House Hotel. The, our initial plan was to subsidize about like 15 rooms, but then over 30 were utilized. And then we also provided 100 free parking spots at Hancher Auditorium. And then we also provided 100 free parking spots at Hancher Auditorium. And we had sent out an exit survey as well to try to gather data, especially for the people that were using those House Hotel rooms. But we had so few respondents, I was kind of inconclusive. But the need was there especially, and it was very nice of the IMU to further, to allow for even more of those subsidies for all of those people that were using it. I believe with the renovations to the IMU in the following years, they're going to be working with us like possibly different like hotels and stuff like that in the Iowa City area, since they won't be providing a House Hotel.
And it won't be a football weekend.
Say that again?
It won't be a football weekend in August.
You may have covered this, but I was curious. This is incredible aggregate information. And I was wondering if of those landlords or property management places that have been included, if you have or plan to reach out to have conversations with them essentially to do the same type of thing that you're doing with us, to share out and say, you know, for better, for worse, here's how you did, so that, you know, if nothing else, they can understand the perception, let alone probably something that they know well about the realities of how they're doing. But in particular, like I'm struck by how available and easy is it to have that communication? Among other things like a missing microwave and burned floors. So anyway, I just wondered if there were plans to or if you already have thought about sharing out this information and this data with the landlords who are represented here.
So we don't have any formal plans to talk to landlords. Usually we reside over like the student aspect. So we usually talk to our student legal services. We also provide information to other students. But we did see a kind of need during that in the Renters Fair. We actually had a few landlord companies come up to us and want a copy of the Renters Guide to reflect on that. So we could definitely explore that going forward.
Yeah, I mean, it's not to put the burden on you, since I know, like you say, your focus was to say, this is to be able to help renters. But it seems to me that there could be something here to help landlords understand better where the problems are and how they're being perceived and how that might be impacting their ability to rent to people. So, thank you.
I really like to commend you all on your initiative on this. I know it sort of started with, let's like, let's figure out how to, if we can't deal with the gap in housing. And when you delved into that, you found that there were a whole host of issues and it was much more complex than anyone had imagined. But that you then went the extra mile and put out this survey and aggregated the data that you can use, that you can present to us. And you could also probably talk to you and I and ISU and then use, the legislature is really outstanding. That's very helpful.
Yeah, we have been, so you and I is looking at trying to replicate this kind of survey to their area. So that's awesome.
I love the six-month lease and how that I hear about it. I mean, it's such a large market. It makes so much sense to offer a couple of options with the lease.
Yeah, I'm sure that there would be some like logistical concerns by landlords for how they would delegate kind of units. And that would be also interesting for how city can cooperate, maybe affordability, like more affordable units to like the buildings and things like that and the six-month leases. But that's obviously another conversation. But yeah, it seems like it could have a lot of potential here for sure.
Well, we're certainly looking forward to the Council and USG's time together early next year. And always good to see you, Ellie. And I don't know if you all are prepared to give your update at this moment. But if you are, we'll, you can do it at this time.
Hi, Council, again, of course. So our first announcement is that the Renters Checklist is getting well on its way. Undergraduate student government is beginning the process to pass the tenant checklist legislation through the Iowa State Legislature. This will be happening, of course, next year when we head up there. We've already begun the process of reaching out to state legislators and we're pretty optimistic. So we're hoping it goes through.
Then the university has seen fast and record growth in Hispanic and Latinx students on campus. And the percentage of Hispanic students enrolled in university has grown from 6.6% in 2020 to 7.1% in 2022. And as a member of the Hispanic community, this points to a more inclusive university environment, and we are welcoming diversity on campus. And then just a quick announcement. We sent out an email a couple of weeks ago to schedule a meeting with Council, and we would love to get to know your goals and share ours as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know we'll look at calendar dates before our time is over today, hopefully. All right. We are going to move on with the next agenda item. And thanks again to USG, to the Quarterly American Rescue Plan Act update. And I'm going to welcome you at this time.
Good evening. Cassandra Grip, Grants Manager with NDS. The U.S. Treasury allocated 18.3 million to the City of Iowa City in the American Rescue Plan Act funds. To date, we have allocated approximately 4.8 million of those funds. This is just a breakdown of where those funds have gone. The Direct Payments to Eligible Adults Program that we partnered with Johnson County on has wrapped up. That is completed. The amount funded was approximately $1.18 million. In total, the City of Iowa City funded 791 direct payments to eligible adults. Eviction Prevention. The proposed program is under review by city staff currently, with shelter houses pursuing potential partnership opportunities as well. Forest View Relocation. Amount funded there is approximately $1.2 million. All tenants have until December 9th to vacate the property and be eligible for their second payment. All tenants have received their first. At last report, we had 20 households that had received only their first check, which is, sounds concerning, but we do have plans for 17 of those. The Center for Worker Justice is working with the other three households as well to try and come up with a plan here to vacate the property. Emergency Nonprofit Assistance. The amount funded there was $485,000. Those applications and agreements are in progress now. They are being reviewed. The programs are getting started and reports will be due here soon. And we'll report back quarterly on updates there. That does include the Wage Left Initiative as well with the Center for Worker Justice, which was applied for separately from that process. BIPOC Business Support Framework and Infrastructure is in in development. City staff will prepare a framework for Council consideration. Social Services Capital Funding Program. That is on the agenda tonight, I believe, here a little bit later. And we will proceed based on Council feedback. Mental Health Services. The Mobile Crisis Outreach. You heard an update from today. That is ongoing and continues. Workforce Development and Childcare. There will be an item on the Council meeting today for the University of Iowa Labor Center for your consideration. And the Foresees Childcare Initiative is also in the process of getting under that agreement and beginning that work as well. Small Business Arts and Culture and Tourism Investments. On the June 6 meeting, Council funded, to think Iowa City, the $250,000. That program is underway. They have awarded four projects to date, and we will continue to update at quarterly meetings. The Utility Assistance Program for, under Revenue Replacement. Council approved that, and that has gone through as well. So those were all brought to zero and utility billing protocols pre-pandemic have been resumed. Final note, staff would just encourage that Council maintain Revenue Replacement as a viable option, as it might provide additional flexibility for these funds in the future, too. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Just a overall question, Cassie. If those that are kind of in development, or there was a note on the resiliency one that maybe that would be local dollars rather than ARPA, given all these other buckets that we have in ARPA. Is there any prioritization for those that are the sort of in development? I realize we may not have a timeline for when we can expect to see some of these frameworks or further things, but...
I can assist with that one. And it feeds well into a point that I wanted to make as part of your discussion here. So if you're looking at the memo that Cassie provided you, it's page eight of your work session pack of your IP on December 1st, you'll see that the second column is the 2021 estimated range. And that's, that's when we did the public input. We said, you know, here's a rough range of where each individual program could be. And we did that for a couple of reasons. One, we didn't have specific implementation plans for each of these items. But two, we also didn't know where we could partner and possibly leverage other funds. But what's important for you to know is if you were to total up that left-hand side, basically the smaller dollar amounts of that range, that's going to equal 18 million. That's essentially our full allocation. And so Counselor Burgess, what you're alluding to is a note in the memo that states the one issue, the one that we haven't started, which is the Climate Resiliency and Hazard Assessment. We're kind of holding that as the, as the final one. Because if we end up spending a little bit more in these, in these other categories, we're going to have to spend less somewhere. And since we haven't started that one, we're just holding that for the time being. In terms of larger priorities, as you know, we have the Capital Grant Program Framework in front of you tonight. And we hope to get any changes that you'd like to see made to that so that we can get that application or issue that request for statements of interest still yet this week. From there, we'll move on to the largest category of spending we have, which is the BIPOC Business Support Framework. So again, we would come to you with a process and ask that you endorse that process, looking to do that in early 2023. And in that same kind of early 2023 timeframe, have some discussions with you about that affordable housing piece. Those are the three big categories that are going to drive our ability or inability to do more in some of those smaller categories towards the end of that table. But again, in kind of order as we see it now, and you're, of course, can redirect us. The Social Service Capital, the BIPOC Business Support, and then the Affordable Housing Piece would be the way that staff would recommend we approach these.
Are there other funding sources besides ARPA that we could expect? Some of these larger, more transformative things, for example, in that, in that resiliency and climate section? Is there anything like in the Inflation Reduction Act or infrastructure bills?
Very well could be. Our intention with, with this was more on the study front. So that 500 to 3 million was at the low end, just conducting that analysis and helping inform future infrastructure decisions and land use decisions was, was the broader idea, right? Trying to project out climate trends and impacts that would have on our city and our infrastructure and just helping us make more informed decisions going forward. As you got to that 3 million side, those were funds that, hey, maybe we can move forward with one or two infrastructure projects that that study identified. We can certainly utilize local funds for that study portion. But the emergency levy that, that is funding our climate activities isn't really robust enough to fund major infrastructure projects. That would have to be done in the context of the Capital Improvement Plan.
I'm actually happy to hear you say this because I know that our Deputy City Manager, Revan and I and Wendy Ford, we're going to be having a meeting about infrastructure with someone that is going to listen to and kind of share what opportunities might be for our city. And so this is just something that I think, you know, can naturally come up in that conversation.
Where do the discussions stand for the, and it's referenced in the, in the Workforce Development and Childcare portion, for that, the additional childcare piece? The one working with business and with the county and so forth, and with the community foundation?
Yeah, so there's a wage supplement program that's been talked about. Here, we've been involved in those discussions. In, in kind of a big-picture view, it's an opportunity to boost the wages of childcare workers without passing those costs along to the parents. That's the whole goal. The county has been taking a lead on surveying local childcare providers to try to kind of understand the amount of funding that would be needed to successfully carry out the program. So we're kind of waiting for those results to be tallied and the program to be designed. And then I'd anticipate coming to the Council with a contribution. And what we've talked about is matching the county's ARPA contribution, which is, going off memory here, I think 750,000, which would round out that workforce development category for us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. All right. Yes, Counselor Taylor. And you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Sorry about that, all these technical things. I just wanted to make a comment for Cassie and thank her for her report. Because I know initially when we heard, oh, $18 million, it sounded like so much money. But there's just a lot of need out there. And I just want to say, I'm comfortable with, with the way funds have been being used. And thank you, Cassie, for keeping an eye on that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. Yes, all right. We are going to move right along in our agenda. Clarification of agenda items. Is this for our formal agenda? Hearing none. We're going to move on to our information packets. We actually had three. So we'll start with November 17. We'll move on to November 23rd. And there are a few items here that we'll need Council direction for. And we'll start with 1123 IP 5. And this is a memo from the Community Police Review Board. A Proposed Amendment to Ordinance 88, requested by the Iowa City Community Police Review Board. So we'll ask our city attorney.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So again, a quick reminder, the CPRB has their own attorney who works with them and staffs their meetings and so forth. So I'm just the messenger passing on what they've requested. Here, they proposed an ordinance amendment speaking about the personal knowledge that is required in order to be a complainant for, well, for a complaint to be brought to the board. And they wanted to basically rule out people who just saw a video on YouTube or someone texted them a video or they saw it in somewhere on social media. They want to clarify, no, no, we want someone who actually has personal knowledge, who is actually there to observe the item and so forth. And so that was a request that the CPRB is bringing to you. So at this point, what we're looking for is your guidance on this, if that's something that makes sense to you and you wish you go ahead and advance the CPRB's request here. Our office will write up the ordinance amendment and bring it to you, probably at your first meeting in January. If you would like to see something different, I'm all ears, and we can pass that on. If you would like to see something different, I'm all ears and we can pass that on.
I have no concerns with it. I read it and it makes total sense to me that someone that, you know, third-hand got this through a video would want to be the complainant, so, yeah.
I think that this is, what they want has sort of been the assumption all along, but they want to make sure that it's actually explicit in the ordinance, so it makes sense to me as well.
And I certainly appreciate, especially in this day and age where there's more opportunity to see, unfortunately, really troubling events. But I think context is everything. And so it is important that no matter how well-intended, someone who might have seen it and said, oh, my God, you should see this, that it really needs to be someone who has witnessed it firsthand to allow the best work to move forward. So I think that this is, makes a lot of sense in the language.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll draft it up.
Great. All right. We're going to move on to IP 6. And this is a memo from our city manager on the nonprofit capacity building capital grant program.
Is this the same? Is this November 23?
Actually, oh.
Oh, you're doing it with them, though.
I am sorry. We're going to continue November 23rd. So any other items from November 23rd before we jump into 121 info packet?
I wanted to give Counselor Thomas and Taylor a chance to talk about the listening post, but in absence of that, although I'll jump in, I just wanted to say thank you. And also, I thought the recommendations that came out of it to have the neighborhood coordinator there to help with facilitating and translating is a great one moving forward. So I just appreciate that you both went out and had that conversation and...
Yeah, I thought it was really interesting. And, you know, I really did a quick summary in these bullet points because the list of issues that came up on the concerns among the residents was quite long. But it sort of reminded me of, you know, the issues we heard from the students as well. There's a lot of rental lease concerns that come up in our community. But yes, it was, I think we both thought, a very productive event. And it was great having Iman there. So I do think in terms of the format that that would be a useful addition as part of that. And so, yeah, it was very gratifying and the residents really appreciated our being there.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I, hi, it's Pauline. Can I speak?
Absolutely.
Just a quick word.
Yes.
I agree with Counselor Thomas. It was a very eye-opening listening post and it just fortifies the point that we need to continue the listening posts as often as we can. These residents were so appreciative of us being there. I mean, they were just like surprised that a council person would come and actually talk to them and care what they said. It was just really amazing. And as John said, it kind of echoed the feeling of the students' concerns with rental issues. Yet there were some more unique things that they had. You know, I'll just say one thing, you know, some of the cultures, they leave their shoes outside their door. And the managers of this complex don't allow that. So it's just sort of, so a lot of cultural things, too, that are different with these people. But they just really appreciate being able to vent like that. And I echo John's sentiment that it would be helpful to have a staff member also along to answer any questions. That's all.
Great. Just one more comment, too, was the fact that Iman is working on the creation of a neighborhood association which goes beyond the boundaries of Pheasant Ridge. But I think there, too, it's a very encouraging sign. You know, and in a sense, the students, too, are organizing around their rental issues. So to see that level of engagement at the neighborhood scale or in the case of the students, kind of a more of a student interest matter. But those organizational efforts, I think, are really going to be fruitful dealing with issues. That city government is just good to lead on, but just doesn't have the capacity to work through the details.
Another interesting point that came out of it, there was a young man who was fairly new to the community. He came to do graduate study. And from where he is, the country he is, the community is out and about all the time. He sees his neighbors and he was just shocked. He says, where's the community? Where are the people? So that was kind of an eye-opener. It's like, where are the people? Where is the community? Now, you know, with the COVID scare, there was a reason to kind of stay secluded. But people need to get out and about and meet their neighbors and know what's going on.
All right.
Do we have our next one? It's not scheduled yet, but we said February? Is that right?
Scheduled.
Or is it scheduled?
I think they are.
Okay.
Oh, that's right.
So I'm sure you'll swing around and make sure that we solidify dates and get that posted.
Great.
All right. Any other item from 1123? We're going to move on to December 1st. And there's two things that I know we need to talk about. We'll start with IP 6. That's a memo from our city manager on nonprofit capacity building capital grant program. So I'll give the floor to you, Jeff.
Sure. Well, the hope at the end of this discussion is that we can get any feedback from you, make any changes that we need to to the process and then move this forward as our next major ARPA initiative. So back in 2021, we set our ARPA priorities. And related to nonprofits, we created or intended to create both operating and capital grant programs for nonprofits. The operating side was seen to address more of the emergent needs coming out of the pandemic. And as Cassie outlined, we're working through grant agreements totaling $485,000 on the operating side of things. And then in addition to that, the $100,000 for the childcare navigator position with 4Cs. So we've done quite a bit on the operating side to assist nonprofits with these ARPA funds. So we're turning our attention next to that capital side of things. And this is really the effort to build capacity to serve. So getting away from some of the emergent needs and focusing on strategic investments in this community, investments that will not only help people today, but will also help future generations as well. Based on those initial 2021 ranges that we provided, and I want you to know, those are still flexible, but we're working off those ranges. We'd recommend $3 million in target awards for these capital capacity grants. And we're suggesting a bit of a modified process. So this process looks very different than that operating grant process. The operating grants, we put out very specific criteria that needed to be responded to. We're able to review those almost apples to apples between nonprofits that applied and make recommendations to you. When you're talking about capital projects, those tend to be a lot more complex. And we have to recognize that, especially in the nonprofit world, it may not always be a whole lot of planning around capital because access to funds is hard. It's hard enough to maintain operations, much less think of ambitious capital plans. So what we want to do here is make sure that we are recognizing that nonprofits in Iowa City may be at different stages of envisioning their capital needs. We have some nonprofits that may have very specific ideas and have developed plans for capital expansion or land acquisition or renovations. And others that maybe have had it on their wish list to say, boy, if we ever had a donor or a grant program come up, we would like to do this. But they haven't necessarily invested in architectural services, engineering services, or maybe looking for land specifically. So I think we need to recognize that folks are going to be at very different levels when we release this. And thus, we're looking at a request for statements of interest as opposed to a hard-ask situation. If we went with that hard ask, you're probably going to tilt towards those nonprofits that have already started the process of that capital campaign. And at least from staff standpoint, we'd suggest really just starting with that idea phase and recognizing that ideas are going to come at different stages of development. So this process would invite eligible agencies, and I'll walk through that in a minute, to basically apply in narrative form over the next month and a half and let us know what their idea for building capacity is within their organization and let us know where they're at in that process in developing those plans. We are encouraging partnerships and so really trying to, whether it's multiple nonprofits coming together, or at least discussions to say, hey, if Agency X were able to expand, we could see partnerships with them in some new way. So really encouraging letters of support and partnerships as part of this project. We've certainly seen success in the community when agencies have come together and worked together. And we'd ideally like to see that through this grant program. With the $3 million pot of money we have, so to speak, we are anticipating one to three awards. We don't want to be very specific. I think we want to leave that open. But probably looking at a minimum grant of $1 million, up to a maximum grant of three. If there's one idea that stands above the rest, it may be that the council chooses to fund that one idea with all of these funds. So from the eligibility standpoint, the document states that it would be, eligible agencies would be legacy agencies as determined through our aid-to-agencies granting process. I think you're all familiar with our annual aid-to-agencies granting process. Those are the agencies that we fund on a annual basis at the operating level. I do need to make a clarification. It was brought to my attention after we put this out. There have been a couple of agencies that historically were in the aid-to-agencies or were considered legacy agencies that were removed over time because other funding sources emerged. So that's the Housing Fellowship and Housing Trust Fund. You may remember the Housing Trust Fund, for example, used to be a legacy agency. And then when we started the $1 million Affordable Housing Fund and we started transferring a portion over that to the Housing Trust Fund, we allowed for administrative costs to be taken from that contribution to the Housing Trust Fund. And when we did that, we took them out of the legacy agency. So that wasn't really their choice to leave. It was just a different funding source. The Housing Fellowship falls under that category because they are the only agency right now in Iowa City that qualifies for CHODO funding, operating funds through our CDBG program. So nobody else can access those operating funds except for the Housing Fellowship. And historically, they were removed from that aid-to-agencies process because of those funds. So we would rewrite this eligibility criteria to clarify that, you know, any agency that was removed due to other funding sources. I don't know exactly how we would word that, but to clarify that expanded eligibility. We did limit the mission of the organization to housing, food security, healthcare, which includes mental health care and youth services, including childcare. So really just trying to narrow in, that's still a rather large field. That touches most of the legacy agencies. But felt it was important to provide some direction on that. We do have financial reporting standards. We included those as attachments here so you could see what those are. Those were adopted by council. And given the fact we'll be investing public dollars of significant sums, we think it's appropriate that prior to making any award, that any agency can demonstrate that they meet those standards. And then also that the agencies are physically located in Iowa City at the time that they submit. So if I skipped over anything that you want to talk about, let me know. Otherwise, again, we would put this out. In terms of an evaluation process, we are recommending something a little bit different, which is that a staff review committee, and if council's interested, I think having one or two counselors on that committee could be helpful, too. But we would review those statements of interest, perhaps interview the applicants, learn a little bit more about their projects, and then come back to the full council with some preliminary awards. And I say preliminary because we have to understand, again, if someone's at the very early stage, of early idea stage, that it may take a few months for a full proposal to be developed and a grant agreement to be written. But we'd want to come back, get council consensus on one, two, or three awards, and then work with those agencies on a schedule that makes sense before coming back to you for those actual agreements.
Jeff, can I interrupt just for clarification? I think you actually preemptively did clarify that there's not a second stage of like an RFP process. It is a statement of interest and then taking them where they stand, where they're at, meeting them, and then working with them. But the award process is based on this narrative?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So you could imagine we might get an agency that says, boy, I'd like to acquire some land and develop this new site, and that sounds good. We think we can leverage funds from this other source. And it all sounds great and we agree with that plan. Before we can really get to this stage where we're writing a grant agreement, they're going to have to do a couple of months of work, maybe work with a realtor to understand availability of properties, maybe cost out a project with a contractor, maybe explore some other grant funds or talk to a capital campaign consultant or their board about a fundraising campaign. So that's the space, I think, that we're going to have to give some proposals if they're at an early stage to materialize into a full proposal. But there would not be a second stage. We would essentially, as a council, you would say, we're comfortable staff with you working with these two or three, one, two, or three agencies to develop full proposals. Certainly, if one were to fall apart, we may have to come back and have discussions. But hopefully, that wouldn't be the case.
I'm wondering about the opportunities for collaborative proposals. So if there were multiple legacy agencies that wanted to leverage their, you know, additional fundraising as between them or co-locate on a site or something like that, can this process accommodate that or would we even maybe encourage that?
Yeah, we're certainly trying to encourage those partnerships right out of the gate. But there could be a situation in which we see two proposals that say, hmm, boy, have you guys talked to each other or would you consider? And I think this process leaves enough flexibility to have those conversations before we make those preliminary recommendations to council.
Great, thank you.
I have a question about it's, under the statement of interest, needs to provide the following, and it's number two. The phrasing is, description of how the project builds community resilience following the COVID-19 pandemic by, et cetera, et cetera. I'm taking it in the spirit that so much of what happened during the pandemic has revealed and exacerbated existing problems, that it's not a matter of, that... The way that I'm understanding the phrasing is that COVID-19 and these dollars are a springboard for these larger visions about serving the community, not that it's like circling back to say, and this is very COVID-19 specific. It's more, we understand that COVID-19 has created more need.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And it's really about, I think, a large intention with these ARPA funds was to build that community resiliency. So when the next challenge comes along, be it a pandemic, be it a natural disaster, be it climate changes, that the community has a stronger support network. And certainly, the nonprofit support network fits under that. So I'd focus less on the COVID-19 piece. That is the source of the funds and the impetus. But it's really, are we making an investment that makes our community more resilient, provides a greater support network for whatever challenge comes our way next?
I know the budget doesn't get into specifics, but oftentimes when we see grant programs, you know, there's always this element of, we need to see some skin in the game from that organization. And is, can you speak to, if someone came and, you know, with the budget, that we will be funding 100% of their requests, let's say they had a million dollars. Can you speak to a little bit of that as far as what the staff, you know, might see that as? Because that's 100% funding.
Yeah, so some of your early ARPA goals that you established highlighted the desire to leverage funding as best as that you can. So we'd... So we'd certainly like to see our dollars leverage private or other available funding sources, but we didn't feel comfortable saying that that was going to be a hard-scoring criteria, because we don't really know what opportunities may be out there, what ability an organization has to truly fundraise. So we didn't want to just discount somebody that couldn't leverage any other funds. Frankly, it could be a service that's being provided that greatly needs to expand, that there's so, there's demand in our community for this to expand, but there hasn't been an ability to access other funds for so long. This may be that one-time shot, I guess is what I'm saying, to do that. So we didn't want to exclude it, but I think with any program like this that we're administering, we like to see the leverage, funds leveraged. So it's definitely, at minimum, would be a conversation we have with someone that's submitting, and we would make sure that they've explored every avenue to leverage funds. But if they can't, if it is 100% request, it wouldn't immediately be discounted.
I'd be interested in assisting in any group of folks who might be evaluating the initial statements, but I don't know how you might want to proceed with having council representation in that group?
I don't want any part of picking the council representation. I'm just welcoming, and if you feel like that would be beneficial, we would welcome. I would say no more than two is probably best, but yeah, that's going to be the hard decision for you.
Well, and I would definitely be interested in it as well. My eyes kind of lit up at it. So, I mean, if it's acceptable to council to have a couple on, I personally do think it could be a really good way to, again, sort of have multiple perspectives and vantage points, and a lot of opportunities to ask questions, and to kind of co-create something, or to, that's not the right way to put it, actually, but to better serve the entities that have the vision, and to have a lot of input from different areas, or to have input from different areas. So I do think it would be useful to have counselors on it, and I don't know if two ends up being too much, too many cooks, but I would love to, and I would love to do it with you.
I think this is a great program that we're going to be navigating, and I think two counselors would be definitely appropriate to be appointed, or to be a part of this. I have no issues at all with both of you being a part. I don't know if there's anyone else that has interest in being a part, so maybe we can open the floor to anymore, anyone else that has interest in being a part?
I do not.
Okay. Any one?
It's interesting. Those that want to do it, I'm very fine with.
And then anyone supportive of these two being a part, which they both get a vote. So, yes, yes, okay. So there you go. All right, have fun.
Thank you. Cam's like, no, I'm staying. I'm going to do this.
I'm just struck at how incredibly fortunate we are as a community to be able to sort of think about these new, different ways to support the community and support these organizations.
Yeah, I think it's a really interesting program, and the way the request has been structured, I think, is really interesting. So I'm really excited about seeing where this might go, and, you know, as you were saying, Counselor Weiner, I think it sort of speaks to the capacity of Iowa City to consider this as a possible outcome.
I mean, I thank you, Jeff, and staff for imagining this. When we first got the funds, we talked about that, let's look at this and think, like 10 years or 20 years from now, let's look back and say, we really did something to improve and advance this community, and this is the sort of piece that can do that.
I mean, it seems, at least my sense is, so many of our nonprofits had similar origins in time. You know, many of them were late '60s, early '70s. Maybe this is another moment in which we begin to see a surge in, you know, gaining strength in those areas of resiliency.
Yeah. All right, any other comments?
So just to clarify, our intention will be to release this, if not tomorrow, sometime later this week, and then submittals will be due January 31st, and we'll get the committee together in early February to start to review those.
Great. All right, we'll go to IP7, which is the US joint, USG joint session. And Keaton, you and, you're both, Noah, welcome to come back up. But really, this is probably just checking a date off of what has already been submitted by Keaton in an email. The only date that I personally saw that I might suggest we avoid is the 14th of February, but I'm a newlywed, so.
I saw that, too.
Yes.
Is there a time of day that you folks were thinking?
I'm pretty sure the last joint session we had was around, like, 6:30, 7-ish, or six to seven-ish. So we could definitely adjust that, but sometime in the later afternoon would be best. Evening, yes.
Is there any day that people would say, or date to avoid?
I would not be able to attend any of the dates after the 23rd of February, so the March dates.
What was the date on this email? I'm having trouble finding it.
It's in our packet.
Oh, oh, it said email. I was on the wrong place.
Yep.
48 in your packet, December 1st.
I don't know if Wednesday, Thursday is, there is a Tuesday in there. If anyone has any issues with us between a six and a seven start. And I guess maybe we can zone in on pick, you know, just go ahead and pick in a date, because this is what they submitted as options. And I'm assuming this is when you all already meet?
We usually meet on a Tuesday, but it's kind of, the dates are offshoots, so it's kind of difficult, especially we're redoing, we're doing elections again in April. So these are the dates that are available for currently. We usually meet on Tuesday, sorry.
Sure.
I'm wondering about, do people prefer the same week as a council meeting, or in between? In between, maybe would be February 15th, I think.
I prefer the same week.
Okay.
I'm sorry, John, did you say the 22nd you were not available?
22nd of?
February.
No, that's fine. It's the March date.
Oh, the March, okay.
And the 28th that I'm not free for.
What about, not to say that we have to go with the week when we meet, but what about February 8th? I mean, that's the first date. It's a Wednesday between 6:00 and 7:00 p.m.
I, yep, I've got a conflict with a good event that night.
And Thursday, conflict as well?
Thursday, the 9th does not look like a conflict.
And Counselor Taylor, what does Thursday, the 9th, look like for you?
Thursday, the 9th, it'd be fine with me.
Good for me.
Yep.
Thursday, the 9th, it is.
I'm sorry.
Yes, we'll have a new counselor, but hopefully.
Their ability to attend.
Yeah, hopefully they'll be able to attend, and if they're not, you know, sometimes you can't make them all.
At what time do we say that we're starting, 6?
We'll get a confirmed time.
Okay.
Within the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, yes, we'll send that as soon as we have it, preferably within the first week, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can I say one, we've been saying to Keaton, first of all, thank you very much, and secondly, please keep in touch with me in, as I transition to a new role. We need to work together on your rental checklist.
Definitely, that would be great.
Great, thank you both. All right, we are going to open it up to any other items in December 1st info packet. Hearing none. Council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees.
Had an EC-COG meeting last week, and I think maybe the most exciting thing is just how they're continuing with the implementation of the Envision East Central Iowa Plan, and being very aware of other regional planning activities. Clearly with Karen Kurt assisting us, that helps here. But yeah, so continuing on with that effort, even though I think my term on EC-COG is done now. It's just one year, right? Pretty sure. We'll confirm.
So we'll have that fun discussion next, January.
Yeah, the JEXA is, has not, but is going to meet next Friday, and that will be my final meeting as chair of that, so that will also need, you'll also need to appoint someone else to that.
I probably jumped too quick. I did want to make a statement about the, in the December 1st info packet, because we had 10 applicants to date that have submitted for the open seat on council that is pending. And I guess, overall, I want to say thanks to the community for reaching out and saying, hey, I would love to be a part of what's happening here. I've found it to be surprising that there are 10 people. When I look at the past, at least two elections, there was only one extra person, we'll say, you know, for each of those elections. And now we're at, with this opportunity where there's a vacant seat and the council intends to appoint, and there is 10 applicants. So I'm trying to figure out, what does that mean? Does it really mean that the, you know, the barrier is, has kind of been broken for a lot of individuals that would like to try something in politics? Although, we know the world of politics, you have to run a campaign. I mean, that's, you know, there are some realities about a campaign, but I also think that this is an opportunity right now for some individuals that may not have, you know, running a campaign was a barrier. So, and yeah, very, I'm very excited to see the 10 that have already applied, and I anticipate we'll see some more.
I have a question, logistical and perhaps even legal, surrounding appointment, because I know that other municipalities have had, for lack of a better way to put it, kind of a gentleman's agreement with those who they have appointed, saying, we strongly encourage you not to run in the next election, because there's that sense of having gained name recognition in the community without having gone through the election campaigning process. And I wanted to know, we haven't talked about that. I don't know if it's our place to do that, if there's legal considerations, or if there are logistical ones, but I just, I wanted to raise it now, since we were talking about this application process, and I know that other municipalities have talked to different people who they've appointed to say, the understanding is that you would not run in this particular, like, right again, due to sort of that sense that there might be a leg up. So I just wondered, can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. I assume you're referring to Corville, who was rather explicit about that interest. I talked to their city attorney about their process to see what lessons I could take, and he was clear with me that his advice to them was clear as well, which is that that would not be enforceable. You know, folks could say, I, you know, I won't run again, I have no intention of running again, and if they decide to run again, of course, they can do so. Is that a fair consideration for this council to consider in looking at applicants? Certainly. If it's of value to you that this is someone who's going to be kind of a caretaker position and not someone who's going to be running again, you could, you know, that's fine, you could say that. It's fine for you not to say that. That's entirely within your discretion.
Thank you.
I'm pretty sure that the school board here was, had the same intention, but they could not find someone who did, was not, did not want to run again, and they appointed anyway, so that's where they.
Right, and I think that was the other, I'd forgotten that it was school board, but yeah, and I don't, I don't have a runner in the race. I just thought because this is part of the conversation recently with special, or with appointments, that I wanted to get some clarity, so.
Sure.
By the way, they're doing the same thing in Beddendorf, which is another community that's not prone to appointments.
Yeah. I think that's a hard, you know, topic.
It is.
I think when someone, you know, if they have a desire to serve on this council, certainly someone may, you know, come out and say, you know, I have, you know, I just want to come and, you know, do a filler until next December, but if they did it out of an expectation, I think that they potentially, one, they haven't done this work potentially, you know, and when you're doing this work, it's pretty important work, and it's kind of hard, you know, to walk away, you know? If your, if your heart is at it, and, you know, you're, it's important work, it kind of draws you in. And so I wouldn't want to put someone personally in a position where my expectation was for them to only serve through the end of December next year and not sign up for reelection, although I can understand that logic. And comments, you know, and then comment does have, in some regards, you know, a leg up, but I think more so, they have history with, because they voted, you know? So the community, they have a record that they, that people can draw back on. And so I wouldn't want to hold anyone to that.
I tend to agree with you, Mayor, just in terms of not asking for that commitment, maybe for a little bit different reasons, but I really appreciate what you said about the, is, are we seeing more interest because of lowering the barrier? And, you know, just my own experience is that the skills of campaigning versus the skills of governing are very different, and finding people who are willing and able to do both of them well is just not, it's a big ask. And so I think the opportunity for someone to serve who may be very well-suited to the service, but maybe might not have been, as, you know, that the barrier part, as you mentioned, I'm not saying we want to, yeah, I don't know. I don't know if that makes sense, but that's kind of what was in my head, is just that those are, those roles are different, and I appreciate the opportunity for someone to step into the service and see if they maybe want to run for longer term.
I appreciate you articulating that, because I think they are very different skill sets.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but, and I'm sure that my answer may have invited this discussion, but since we haven't really noticed this topic to this degree of.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. If we could wrap up.
We will move on if there's nothing else. All right, we'll be back at 6:00 p.m.